Call the meeting over, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will call please.
Trustee Trumbly, trustee Malinsky, trustee Connor.
Eric.
Trustor. Mayor McThahtrich.
Eric.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April third meeting, please.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. You may have a motion to approve the minutes of April thirteenth.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that motion carries as well. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period for members of the community. Welcome, members of the community. It's nice to see you. Anything you want to share with us?
So we deal with the pickleball. Um, so we have some petitions back. Um, we went on the school and goes, we could go to the school. I know you got, you tried to get a little bit at work, but we have some signatures. So we're hoping we can try to use these to get some money.
I don't know many that you need. They gathered over a hundred.
Oh, that's awesome. So I'm going to share some information with you. Might not be exactly what you want to hear, but um, a couple of things. Um, first of all, um, I talked to someone at the planning department for the county about how to get the okay to put in this pickleball court on FEMA byoutland. And she gave me the forms and it's a very, very lengthy procedure. There have to be okays from the state, the county and the state and probably the federal government because it's a federal thing. Um, it would take, it looks like it'd take a year or two to get the okay. So there's that. And then the other thing is the cost appears to be sixteen dollars per square foot for concrete that the water can go through, um, which a pickleball court is twenty by forty-four. Um, so that comes out to be over fourteen thousand dollars just for the concrete. So the money is a concern. Um, the board discussed it briefly. Um, and we were wondering if you, because it sounds like there are a lot of hurdles, if you would consider having that court at the new Bob Ben Park by the high school? Because there won't be, there's no, it's not FEMA byoutland. So you don't have to get the okay, you just need the town. And I mean, we obviously would work with you because we're really supportive of it. But we wondered if that might be something you might want to consider.
So you're talking across from the high school?
Yeah, you know, they put in the soccer field, they put in the volleyball court, the sand outdoor court. They've got the rec trail goes through there so people can ride bikes to and from. We just wondered if it would be an easier thing to accomplish.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if they could see it before they're off to college.
Well, that's my concern. I know I'm thinking it could be like two or three years down the road and you could come back and go, I helped to get that. But there's even no guarantee that they're going to say okay. But they are developing that park in the town and we're working close. The villages and the town work really closely together. So we thought that maybe that might be an alternative that maybe would be easier to, to really make real.
I think this is, I think this is a perfect idea.
Yeah.
So um, I would suggest that you go to a town board meeting. I'm happy to come too, if you'd like me to. Um, and present the petitions and explain the idea. And I can, any of the board members, we can back you up on all the work that you've done on this. Um, and see how they feel about having that at that park. They meet on the second Tuesday.
They're meeting tomorrow night.
We would be able to go tomorrow night, but maybe the month after.
Or you know, you could even write them a, uh, you could.
Yeah, he, they have track meets every Tuesday.
Yeah. You could even write them an email. You, Tom Trumbly is the supervisor. You could write him an email, present the idea and uh, he could even bring it up just for general discussion.
Yeah, if you wanted to email him, um, I can give you his email address before you leave. Um, and uh, he can maybe put it under new business for tomorrow night and I can give him a heads up that it's coming.
Yeah, if you, if you have time to do that. If not, I mean, we can also tell him about it.
Mike does.
It seems like it might be a good fit though, because it would be the community. It's accessible through the rec trail, which is really nice.
No restrictions.
So.
It would be more than a B O, cheaper too, I'm sure.
Shouldn't, shouldn't we have to be permeable?
No, it won't have to be permeable concrete.
Concrete there, so that should change the cost by a lot.
Oh my goodness, yeah, it could be like a third of the cost or even less. I don't really know.
I don't know what concrete is right now, haven't.
I don't know, but it's not going to be sixty per square.
No.
Permeal.
No.
Permeable is very expensive.
I don't know what they were basing it on, but it's, but it's, I'm sure it's.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I just, I was reading about how to install those online and yeah. So I wondered, I did want to share that with you tonight.
Do you want it, send him an email? Yeah, I guess I'll email. If anyone's not.
Another thing, you might not be able to put up a fence either because of the restrictions of FEMA.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, that's.
Hold agree.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure a fence wouldn't be allowed down, downtown here. But there's a lot of land down there and they are just developing that. So I think it, I think it could be a good possibility.
Are they going to be putting a parking lot in there?
Mm-hmm. That's part of the plan eventually, but of course you've got the school parking lot right across the road.
Right.
With a marked crosswalk, so yeah. Anything else?
Um, then what would the, then that, that park is called?
Bob Ben Park.
Okay, can you write that down? So he has all, cause it's, it's, it's going to be nice for me. If I don't have things written down, it's going to. And then the stumps, they had talked about, these two had talked about painting the stumps.
Oh, the ones at the children's garden?
Yes.
Yes. That's a good idea.
And it's getting warmer and it's, I think it's a good time of year to start thinking about doing that. And then that would be ready to use over the summer.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Kind of turned that over to Nikki, she's more in charge of that.
How many steps are they making this?
They're like six?
Yeah, I think there's five or six there.
And then the paint.
We could just, I have paint that from the uh.
The concrete.
Yep. So there's probably maybe half a gallon or so, that would probably be plenty.
They were thinking of trying to like actually painting maybe a flower on one and a sun on one, you know? To actually make them colorful.
We can, I'm sure we can cover the paint.
I was gonna say, maybe we could get some of those, like Lowe's has those little containers, you know, the, the samples, whatever. And get some different colors, you know, to paint flowers and.
Yeah, I think Ace has that too.
Yeah, I think we could do that, yeah.
Well, we actually want that too, because we're going to paint the.
Yeah, we want to paint the concrete.
Yeah.
The concrete thing down there too, that the water thing sits on.
Okay.
So we wanted to paint like a garden of flowers around it.
So.
So we'd use the same paint, yeah.
You can combine it, yeah. You can combine it, you know?
Yeah.
I guess once you have the paint, just let me know and then maybe like a, a uh.
That's part of the fix.
Thank you. Oh, here you go.
A polyurethane or some sort of a spray or something on top.
That's a great.
To see what it's, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Saturdays, any of us, do you have track meets?
Well, the tracks will be over in what, three, four weeks, so.
Yeah.
And then after that, so we'll be out, so after that, so I should be pre-opened.
So maybe sometime in June.
Yeah.
I would, yeah, I would say the, probably by Friday, June.
Yeah, cause you have, boys can have the first weekend to lie, so your June is pretty open.
Yeah, after, I ran up to files in June, but my school owns, yeah.
Was it on Sunday?
Uh, the weekend, yeah, I think June.
Yeah, we do a weekend.
Just, you know, most, and once track is done, we're good.
June tenth.
Yeah, that'd be fun. We'll get down there and we, you can help us do the other thing too, the concrete thing too.
Yeah, that was in my notes, I see that. I have to set up the time for that.
Okay. Good.
Yeah.
So Nikki, you're, you're in charge of that?
Well, well, we work together, but she's, she's more.
And you have my number? Cause I, I can give you a business card, that would be easier.
Yeah, hand over a card and I can, yeah, call you. Yeah, I think we'll set it up as June tenth and we'll do some, like a whole, maybe with it. Paint both things, maybe do a sign, same thing.
Oh yeah, we could do the sign also, wanting to do a sign too.
Painting that one.
Did you want us to just hold on to these petitions?
I would say take them to the meeting at the town or, or you can give them to me, I can forward them.
Cause I know I had passed one out, I didn't know if any of you had.
I think we got a couple.
Yeah, I heard one, did I give it to you last?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I can take them there and then.
Yeah, I can take them there.
That's, that's fine.
I did make a photocopy of them just in case.
Okay. Thanks for all the work on this.
Of course.
Anything else?
I don't think so. You're in charge of emailing tonight and then Nikki will get in touch with us when she has the paint. So find a day where there's no rain for a few days in June and enjoy.
Yeah. You have fingers crossed. Great, yeah, thanks for, thanks for working with us on it, it'll be fun. All right.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, good to see you.
Have a good evening.
You too. All right, we have the report from the code enforcement officer.
Just one comment, seems like same old, same old. Unfortunately, things aren't getting done that's supposed to be getting done.
Well, I, I will say though, I, I do believe that he's following up with the next level of offense when something doesn't get done within a certain timeframe.
Well, I'm sure he is, but I'm just saying people just aren't responding the way.
Yeah.
They say they're going to.
Eventually, they're going to have fines to be paid. So that's pretty much all we can do. Are there any particular questions on any of this? Okay, there's my report. Good evening and welcome to the May Village Board meeting. I'd like to thank all the volunteers who made our village cleanup and tree planting successful. We have planted over twenty trees in the village in the past several years. Much of this has been done at the playground where these beautiful trees ring the area. We're proud to be a Tree City USA and will continue to maintain and plant trees in the village. I know many of you are looking forward to your small recreational campfires. We will be lifting the moratorium on those fires in the village soon and it will take effect um, at the end of this month. Fire pit applications will be available at the office soon. If you had one before, contact the office and ask for it to be, uh, if there are no changes, ask for it to be extended. The community garden, which is located near the river on Maiden Lane, will be tilled soon. Any resident who would like a plot should sign up at the office. We also have a children's garden, um, where there will be garden classes and activities held. And we are also planting a sensory garden there this summer. The annual Saint Mary's Bazaar and Parade will take place on May twenty-eighth. This is the fifty-fourth annual bazaar and we are always happy to support this fun-filled community event. In addition to the usual traditions, there is a tractor pull at ten AM uh, with registration beginning at eight AM. Thanks to those organizers who work hard to offer this event year after year. That's it. Uh, report from the trustees, Kim, you want to start?
Um, so Nikki and I have been corresponding back and forth regarding the personnel policy and the changes that we want to make. Um, Mary, I think we talked about this last month. Mary had sent us various items that we should be cohesive with the union contract so that it's not, well, it's here, but it's not here, so. So Nikki and I both agreed with all of the recommendations that Mary made on that. So when we go to um, do the union contract next year, we will be, well, we can put those changes into effect now, but we will definitely be more cohesive with them going forward. Um, as for some of the items in the personnel policy, um, that Nikki and I were asked to work on, we're still going back and forth trying to decide how, where we want to put it in the policy and what the verbiage is going to be, so that everything is very crystal clear.
Excellent, great.
Maybe, maybe by next month, but I know. I bet he's right out straight with school.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Well, thanks for your work on it. Anything else?
Um, Water Board is meeting on Wednesday, so we are, you know, partway through the year. Um, I will begin working on the EDU report. Um, Mary gave me a copy of the tax roll, so I will start working on that. Maybe this weekend, cause that's going to take a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a line-by-line item.
Right.
So.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Nikki?
Uh, thank you Janet for organizing the International Slow Art Day.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yes, it was nice. Um, it also led to a discussion of holding a plein air day sometime this summer, so keep an eye out for that. Plain air, it's where you go out into the open and you paint scenery.
And you, you do it like over one day and then you bring it in and have a show like that day or the next day? Oh, awesome.
Yeah, so it's to get yourself outside of the walls of a office or a, a four-wall room.
Oh.
Um, let's see, I had, I held a terrarium workshop, um, I think I had ten. Like, it's so long ago, um, who participated, uh, it went really quick. Um, but we, they all planted tiny succulents into little jars and they really, really enjoyed it.
It was really fun.
Uh, our spring cooking class, we had about eight participants and it was rescheduled because of bad weather, I believe. Um, and the children made veggie pinwheels and ham and cheese rollups and that was well-attended and received. A lot of the kids ate it before they even made them. So it was a nice little group.
They shouldn't go hungry.
Yeah, they had their second lunch. Um, and again Janet, thank you for organizing the Arbor Day, um, as always, it's a wonderful day of cleaning up our, our town and village, um, along with Kew on us in town Champlain. I think we did quite a number of streets in the area. Um, and we have the new trees put in and they look great.
Yeah.
They still look really good, so it's nice. Um, just like our friends said, uh, they have stumps they would like to help paint. We also want to work on painting the concrete block. So in June, I will be setting up a day to um, do some painting up in there. So that'll be an event coming up. Miranda.
Yeah.
Uh, the library is holding a library crawl. This is their second um, annual library call. Due to COVID, we had to stop for a couple of years. Um, the purpose of this is to visit multiple libraries in one day. And each library, you receive a stamp and a little passport. And at the end of the day, you turn it in for a drawing for um, some really great gift items and books. Uh, each library, there's about thirty participating libraries. Um, that includes Clint, Essex and Summit Albert. Maybe, maybe Swan. I don't remember how far she went. Um, but each library is um, holding their own activity or event during that day. Um, the Champlain Library will have the WPTZ weather van come visit, so that'll be there in the morning. And um, I forgot what else she's actually done. Um, and I think she contacted an author, a local author and only asked for one or two books and then she ended up sending fourteen different books. So we have plenty of gifts to give away at the end of the day. Um, and that's June third, I think I said that. June third, yeah. And all the libraries will have their own times. Um, there is an event on Facebook, so you can check with the local libraries or whichever library you'd like to participate at for their times. Um, June ninth, I'll be holding a paint and snack for kids at the library. Um, so the kids will come and do their own painting and um, it's a ten dollar donation to the library. Um, I also have the fun runs potentially set for dates for the summer. Um, the first of all is a kickoff, which will be held July first, Saturday at nine AM at the Russell's Point Civic Center. Um, the Stars and Stripes Committee asked if we would mind holding a fun run. So we can work with them and that will be our first fun run of the summer. Um, and then the rest of them will hold back down at River Street like usual. And last year we had one, so we'll use that as part of this year's program. And that's what I have.
Great, Nikki, thanks. Chuck?
Um, first thing is, I developed a list and I put in each uh, trustees box of uh, names of businesses, organizations, uh, and such that we may invite to our hundred-fiftieth anniversary celebration uh, to either promote their, their organization, maybe have some raffles, you know, giveaways and that type of thing. Uh, if they want to have a, a table or booth or something like that, uh, we will appreciate it. I'd like the trustees to maybe take a look at the list and see if there's anything that they don't think should be on there or things that should be added. Or if I made a mistake on some of the names, uh, correct the names. Once I get the list back, I'm going to be putting all the addresses and telephone numbers in a spreadsheet and then we'll, we'll send the letters out according to the list. So that's, that's one thing. Uh, another thing is myself and other people observed these motorized bicycles in the village. And it's all well and good, people are not wearing helmets, which is required by law. And also they're riding on the sidewalks, which is, is illegal. So just a little heads up for parents and the kids out there that are doing this to maybe take care of the issues of no helmets and being on the sidewalks. I know myself, I almost got hit by one, that was on a sidewalk, my car. It was, I almost hit my car, so I just don't want to see anybody get hurt or injured. And I was looking at the uh, the email we got from Nikon about the uh, New York State budget. And there's, there's some items there that I would like to think would qualify for, for grants. And I spoke with Janet earlier, so I think maybe there's this few there that we might pursue.
Yeah, talk to the engineers about additional money maybe for water.
Yeah.
Um, and then there, there's that Explore New York one that might have something in terms of downtown utilization. It's worth, it's worth, we, we would need to hire a grant writer, but it's definitely worth looking into, I think.
Yep. So.
Yeah, I agree.
I guess that's it for now.
Thanks, thanks Chuck, thanks for all your work on this list too. Uh, Joel?
So I'm just working on the, uh, organizing the cornhole tournament or cornhole um, portion of the celebration. Um, I was looking at the pricing and I mean, in my mindset, I think getting something quality where you can just buy something that's like official and um, of quality and you can use it for years would be the best bet in my mind. I don't know what everyone else thinks, cause I mean, it's relatively simple and you could make them yourself, but I don't know how much use still um, we'll get out of them. And if we can continue to use them in the future, that would be the best thing. So um, you know, it's roughly like, I would say three hundred bucks per set to be able to do like one game at a time. And depending on how many people, how much interest there is, I think it would make sense to have more than one. Um, I think at the very least two, that way you can have a couple of games going on at a time. Maybe you could have teams, I think, cause you can play the game with four people or two people. Um, so then my question would be, what would be the best way to, to, do we want to pay that out of pocket? Do we want to try and have some sort of fundraiser? Should I do a fundraiser on my own and then with the intention of donating the sets to the village? How, what would be the best way, I don't know, I would ask everyone here.
The first thing I would think of is the money in the playground account.
Yes, there is money in there. I do have a couple of people that I know that make them.
Appropriate use.
I don't know what they.
Yeah, how, how well did those homemade ones hold up? Is it plywood? Is it plywood that they?
What is it, you said it's just the, the bags and.
I can find out the cost.
What, what else is there?
It's really it. It's, I mean, you'd have to have like a, a stretch, the dimensions. I can't remember what the, the footage is or the distance, but I can look at it.
I've seen someone that have like a rope or something where they, you know, it's pre-measured or you just string it out.
Yeah, you could do that. I mean, yeah, it's, I mean, you, we could just measure it. I mean, really all it has to be is just flat so that you, cause it's supposed to be on an angle. There's just certain angles. I mean, it really just depends on, you know, the World of Joyster, you can really, I mean, they have the official ones. That's like the official four hole tournament league. And you know, those are three, four hundred, or you know, like I said, three hundred bucks for a set with all the bells and whistles. We could make them ourselves. I mean, we could probably, you know, someone has handiwork or craftsmanship, they could pump three or four out of them.
Do you want to find out how much?
Yeah.
Yeah, Juanita can find out how much they cost the person that she homemade.
She knows, yeah.
Um, but we do have some money in the playground account.
Yes, there is.
Would be a good use for that.
Yeah, and then that would be the question as to what we would want to do with them going forward. Um, would they be like something that we would hold? It could be an annual thing, like an actual, just like an event, cause that's what my thought was last year. Just hold some things, there were a lot of interest in it.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Can I almost break them down, like when we have concerts or something?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's exactly.
Yeah, people are, you know.
I wouldn't leave them out all the time, just because I feel like they would be destroyed in a week, but.
You might drop away.
But yeah, I mean, it would be, it would just be a fun thing, ready time of summer to get together that's going on. I think it would be enjoyable, it'd be fun to have.
Yeah, that sounds like fun.
It's like the old fest time, you know?
Yeah, the village fest is a good time, the concerts, yeah.
Yeah, it's something ever, anyone, you know, it could be five years old or.
A lot of people to play.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great. Anything else, Joel?
Ooh, that's it.
Great, thank you for looking into that. Um, let's see, report from the clerk treasurer.
Okay, everyone has their April expense and revenue reports. We only have one month, the end of the year.
Pretty hosed. Yeah. Does anyone have any questions on that part of it? All right, do you want to do the transfers?
To transfers, or we do our abstract, because some of these do have to do.
Yep.
Okay, we, our transfers are A thirteen twenty-five point one treasure personal services a hundred and fifty dollars from A ninety sixty point eight hospital and medical insurance, a hundred and fifty dollars to A fourteen ten point one clerk personal services, a hundred dollars from A ninety sixty point eight hospital and medical insurance, a hundred dollars um, to fourteen twenty point one law personal services, a hundred and fifty-six dollars from A fourteen twenty point eleven, um, general code publishers to A sixteen forty point four, central garage contractual, one thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars from A fifty-four ten point four sidewalks, one thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars to A fifty-one forty-two point four snow removal contractual, one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars from A fifty-one forty-two point one snow removal personal services to A ninety fifty point eight unemployment, four hundred and eighty-one dollars from A nineteen sixty point eight hospital medical insurance, four hundred and eighty-one dollars um, to A ninety-seven thirty point seven band insurance, two hundred and fifteen dollars from A ninety sixty point eight hospital and medical insurance, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Um, from F, uh, to F eighty-three ten point one water administration personal services, a hundred and dollar, a hundred dollars from F ninety sixty point eight hospital medical insurance, a hundred dollars. Um, to F ninety. Um, to F ninety fifty point eight unemployment a hundred and ninety-three dollars from F ninety sixty point eight hospital medical insurance a hundred and ninety-three dollars to G eighty-one ten point one sewer administration personal services a hundred and fifty dollars from G ninety sixty point eight hospital medical insurance a hundred and fifty dollars to G ninety fifty point eight unemployment two hundred and eighty-nine dollars from G ninety sixty point eight hospital medical insurance two hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
May I have a motion to approve these transfers? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Um, do we wanna do those? Let's do the warrant.
Let's do the warrant, yeah.
Okay, our warrant, we have additional invoices of five thousand eighty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents for a total warrant of thirty-five thousand three oh five seventy-eight.
I have a motion to approve the warrant with the, uh, additional invoices. Is there a second? Discussion? Any questions on any of this? No? Roll call.
Trustee Chombley. Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
All right, now the projects.
Okay, so we have invoices to be paid for the water replacement project. Um, Barton and La Judas eight thousand four hundred and sixty-seven fifty. Fiscal advisors four thousand nine hundred dollars. Premier printing one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, Oric, Oric, um, Harrington and Sutcliffe four thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and Stafford Owens and Murnane six hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total of twenty thousand four sixty-two fifty.
May I have a motion to approve this? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on this? Roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Um, wastewater treatment plant project, we have three invoices. Triangle Electrical Systems ten thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Barton and La Judas ten thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-nine cents. And Pipeline five thousand six hundred and thirty-two forty for a total of twenty-six thousand nine twelve ninety-nine.
May I have a motion for this?
Small.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? All right, roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Um, report from the superintendent.
Well, it's, uh, now that the rain has let up, we're staying pretty busy here on the streets. Um, not much to report in water. We did the interim readings. Um, we had a few PRBs that failed, had to replace. Uh, one water meter had frozen, sometimes this winter had to swap out. Um, sewer, the contractors at the sewer plant, um, they're still working. Uh, they got one side of the clarifier drained, paint, aluminum flights and chains installed. Um, it's been refilled and they're working on the, um, they're working on the other side now. Um, some of the stuff is lag time coming in and as it's coming in, they're, uh, they're getting it installed. So as time goes on, stuff keeps coming in, they'll be, they'll be working here for a while. Um, equipment, the water equipment was clean, desalted, put away. Uh, service was done, the new hauling, uh, probably can't tell, but Lund one has begun. Uh, we gotta get on it again this week here. Um, maybe new rock screen for the loader for sweeping, trying to keep the glass intact from the windshield and. Um, streets, street sweeping was done. Um, we did remove the, the tree that had died, it was a stump down at the, at the park. We did remove the, the stump and, um, Janet went down and they planted a new tree in its place, so. Um, that's good, that, that the tree didn't be taken out anyways. Um, some repairs were made to the gazebo. We, um, we did clean a bunch of culverts and ditches, put all the rain, they had a lot of, uh, a lot of debris and, um, and plug culverts, which we took care of a lot of them. Uh, we're in a process now of actually changing some culverts. Um, our main focus now is getting ready for, uh, for paving. They want us ready in June for paving, so we're, uh, we did some shoulder cutting, but we still got ditch and culvert work to do. So that's our main, uh, our main priority now is getting ready, so we're ready for when they come to, uh, come to pave. I did, um, add some stone down by the charging stations, vehicle charging stations and fix that. We're hoping to get some, a little bit of asphalt there too, so we're not in the mud. Um, other than that, um, brush pickup, um, still this month, month of May. Uh, once May's over, brush pickup's done. Um, maximum one load per property. Make sure you put it out curbside and there's no pickup of any bagged leaves or debris, uh, anything like that, it's brush only. Um, and if they have questions about that, they can always call the officer, but.
There are water bags of leaves out.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Yeah.
So. Oh, uh, well, uh, sewer, uh, one thing I didn't mention, I know sewers, but I did, I had to put some, uh, we lost our controller on the Main Street lift station. So I wired some temporary floats, so our station will run. I'm working on, um, getting quotes on replacing that station. Um, it's gonna be expensive. Um, we've got, I've got one quote came in so far and it's, you know, over twenty thousand dollars just for material, so. Um, I gotta get more quotes, I'm trying to find others to get quotes from. Um, and even that, their lead time, the quote I did give, I think the weekly time is like sixteen weeks or something, so.
Wow, four months.
Well, we've got pumps, they're six months. We're, we're waiting for light pumps, it'll take six months to get them.
I thought that had.
No, that's.
Started to change.
No, that's common, like.
I've seen that, yeah.
And that's why we're trying to change over on some of our pumps to, um, some of them we changed to Barmesas, which are like from Texas, which are like a four weekly done instead of twenty-six weeks. I mean, it's huge difference.
Yeah.
Problem we have with our, this station, I mean, it's, it's old, but, um, the way they have it designed, you can only use their pumps, the way the controlling works.
Oh.
So they have it fixed and the pumps are, you know, two to three times the price of what you can buy other pumps for. So, uh, when we upgrade that station, we, we wanna make sure it can take, it's more versatile. You can use pumps that are less expensive.
Yeah, okay.
So. Um, but I'm just gonna continue working on that. I'm hoping to meet some people here in another week or so at one of the shows to see who else is out there that I can go to.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, some of the stuff is just, um, it's the way it is, you can't get it or it's, you know, I mean, whatever that issues with electrical stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Electrical, the lead time electrical is beginning to.
They don't even know.
Sometimes maybe a year. I mean, that's part of our sewer plant issue, switch gears, can't give, so. And then we're looking on putting temporary, uh, power in so we can run our plant and meet our, our deadline for DEC.
Yeah.
To be able to, I mean, we're all in the same boat, but it's, uh, materials, it's quite a shortage on some things. So I don't have, I don't have any else, I hope anybody has any questions for me.
Well, I just wanna say thank you to you and all the guys for the, the work you're doing.
No problem.
Anyone have any questions for Mike?
Mike, I just have one question, when you're, when you're paving, um, Maple, are you going, you're doing Maple all the way around?
Doing Butter Nut, Maple and Butter Nut.
Okay, you're just trying to plan ahead.
Yeah, we'll redo it. Um, I don't know the exact dates yet. They haven't got, they, they've probably come in the day before, say we'll be here tomorrow. That's typically how.
That's okay.
It goes, but, um, yes, both, both of the streets are gonna be done. I've got some culvert work that we're working on, we gotta get that crossing in, in the end of Maple, and then I gotta see, uh, like where you guys are, I gotta jet those culverts and see, because it's, I know, yours is full. Um, it needs to be cleaned, I jetted from the other end and it only goes partways by where Take Trail lives and then at the dead end. So I don't know if there's culvert missing in between, there used to be a ditch there, so I gotta figure out the downside before I move up. Um, if we can get that done before the paving, it's great. If we can't, I'll have to look at it later, but, um, at least the culvert crossing and stuff, I wanna get in, give them a chance to get them tamped good, so we don't have.
If you can give me a heads up on not just Maple and Butter Nut, but any other streets that you're gonna be paving, so I can, I'll let the transportation office know?
Yeah, usually I try to, when we are paving, usually I try to find out what buses and what times.
Yeah.
Um, so the other ones that are on the plan right now is Walnut, which you probably don't have anybody on Walnut?
I go around Walnut every day.
You got kids up in the back there?
No, it's my turnaround, I, but I can, I can make another turnaround if I need to.
Um, and, um, Main and Lane.
All the roads that I use.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that on purpose, Kim.
I know, I see that.
If you go by, and if you go by Dixie, Mac, Church Street, Water Street, Main Lane, they haven't updated, but.
Yeah.
That's gonna be another one that's in bad shape that I want to, uh.
So Church.
Uh, they still have other maps, ma, all, all Main Lane, that whole.
Yeah, they still call it Church.
It's still, it's still Church Street, Water Street, Main Lane, they never changed it, they're using old maps.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, so Walnut, Main and Lane, Maple and Butter Nut, okay.
Yeah.
And I can just give, uh, when you find out, like, when they're gonna start.
Yeah, as it gets closer, 'cause I gotta, I gotta do the same thing with truck traffic. And that's something I wanna discuss later with you guys, too. Um, there's a couple things after that I think we need to look at. Uh, one of them is, I wanna put some signage and not let any trucks come from this end to Kimpecks. I'm gonna see if we can put some kind of signage, really have to use the Route eleven end, let them come in, let them go out that end, because it's constant here.
Yeah, we've talked about that.
With truck traffic on the bridge and it's just, um, it's really beating up the road bad.
Yeah, well, we have another problem too on Butter Nut Street at the NADA building.
Well, they have to, there's local delivery.
Yeah, a trac, a tractor trailer I met coming off Maple onto Oak.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, you wanna talk about, wow, yeah, oh, yeah, he didn't stay all the way on the road.
Yeah, so, I mean, a local delivery, we have to let them, like, that's a warehouse, you have to let them go. But the, the through traffic that comes on this end that goes to Kimpecks.
Yeah.
Building, social building, there's no reason they can't go down eleven, come in that and go back out. And the other thing I wanna see on the other end is maybe no, no incoming traffic on the far end of Walnut, 'cause they're always cutting that corner. Maybe have them come out on this end.
Yep.
I mean, go in on, you know, on, on the west end.
Yeah.
So I, I, I wanna look at that and see if, um, that's a possibility. But this year, I mean, we have Monche Street, stop Monche Street, and some locals, you know, traffic trailers as well, you were there one night.
Yeah. Yeah, we were.
So it's a constant.
We were standing in front of my house and here comes a big tractor trailer.
I know, and it's too bad up on NADA, because that is such a small road.
Oh, I know.
To, and then have to go around that curve, it's too bad that they can't offload onto a smaller truck to get it up there, because.
And they don't do a lot out of there, very seldom.
Oh, I've, in the past month or so, I've run into two tractor trailers and they don't travel slowly on that road.
Usually they come in from the Parkhead end and they back in there and then they fill up soon.
Yeah, you're right.
Wow, yeah, when I, when I.
Those you can't stop, because it's, it's a commercial building unfortunately.
Yeah, right.
But through traffic, I mean, we get it on Prospect all the time.
Yeah, there's no reason for that.
They cut across the other end of Parkhead and come back over Prospect, which they don't need to.
Yeah.
I've got signs there, I mean, we don't own way down there, but I have no, I'm gonna see if we can get some different signs, maybe something maybe bigger.
Yeah.
And when they get, we can stop, or they get stopped, fine, once it's, once you get a few, they should stop.
Yeah.
It's hard to, 'cause I know the GPS sometimes, of course, it's always the excuse, but usually you can tell when I've got somebody if they're, you know. But that's something I wanna look at after, maybe put in some signage to have them use Route eleven then, and try to keep extra traffic off that if we can, if we can.
Yeah, it's really a good idea. All right, anything else for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Uh, correspondence.
Memo to staff members approving vacation carryover requests. Correspondent codes officer to Sandra Barber regarding trash and debris. Correspondence from codes officer to Tim Look Count regarding demolition. Correspondence from Clinton County Highway regarding road striping. Two thousand twenty-three first quarter sales tax revenue distribution in Clinton County Treasure. Correspondence from codes officer to James Sparkham regarding burning. Request for wastewater credit for John Allen at Thirty-Six Meadow Lane. Correspondence from codes officer to Ron Donahue regarding junk. Letter to, letter of thanks to Celine Pawcap.
All right, under new business, uh, first we have a wastewater credit, uh, Thirty-Six Meadow Lane. Uh, I think this fits our guidelines. You can verify that, Mike?
Yes, headline right underneath.
Is there a motion to approve this of the sewer credit? Okay, is there a second? Second. Any, uh, questions or discussions? All right, roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Herzog.
Hi.
Mayor McFetrich.
Aye.
Um, I have a couple of, um, proclamations. So the first one is to the Champlain Literary Club, which is celebrating its one-hundredth birthday. Wow. Which is a pretty incredible, started in nineteen twenty-three, right up on Oak Street. I'm going to read this and then I'll, um, ask you each to sign it after. Uh, proclamation honoring the Champlain Literary Club on its one-hundredth birthday. Whereas it is incumbent for us to recognize and honor local organizations which have added to the social lives and learning opportunities of our residents. Whereas this year marks the auspicious occasion in which the Champlain Literary Club celebrates its one-hundredth birthday. And whereas the Champlain Literary Club was formed in the spring of nineteen twenty-three when an interested group met at the home of Mrs. Oscar Breedenberg. The desire was to cultivate their intellect within the club's activities. And whereas early on, the Champlain Literary Club united with the Saint Cecilia Music Club to form the first library association. Club members served as volunteer librarians. And whereas worthy causes have always been supported, including Christmas baskets for needy families, scholarship awards, uh, and the fire department. And whereas speakers have included Senator Stafford, Allen Everest, James Fitzpatrick, Daniel Marr and Hugh McClellan. Activities have involved an annual picnic, book reviews, progressive dinners, visits to historical places, plays and music events. And whereas the Champlain Literary Club has kept itself always acting for the promotion, the promotion of good cheer and fellowship among its members. And now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Champlain honors the Champlain Literary Club on its centennial celebration. We have a motion to approve this, so. Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, and, um, Mary, did we get it in special, pretty paper?
Not yet, I, I just thought about that when, when looking at that, I will check with her tonight.
Well, I mean, we can use that if, if we don't.
You, you, you have that, you have it on your computer.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll get ahold of her tonight, 'cause I haven't heard back yet.
Okay, so, their, their birth, their, their actual celebration is on June sixth, so we have time to have you stop in and sign the one on the pretty paper.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And I will present that at that. And then, um, we also have to do our annual Arbor Day proclamation. So I will read that one as well. Village of Champlain Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are source, source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain. Now therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain do hereby proclaim the last Friday of April as Arbor Day in the Village of Champlain and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further urges all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. They have a motion to approve.
So.
And a second?
Second.
All right, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, motion carries. Um, all right, uh, New York Class Investments. Um, so a New York class, which stands for the New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System, um, is, um, it's a, a group that, um, is available to any municipality in the state of New York outside of New York City. There's no minimum investment. There are no transaction fees. Um, and the interest rate that I saw currently is four point four three, uh, which is pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, so Juanita and Mary and I were discussing some money that we do have set aside. I don't know, Juanita, do you wanna, do you want me to just go through this? Well, primarily we're talking about the, the, the two hundred fifty-nine thousand, correct?
Correct. That's only earning zero point one five.
So it's, so it's only earning zero point.
And it doesn't mature till Jan- till July tenth. Um, so at that time, it should be, it should be over. It should be two hundred sixty thousand.
So, um, that gives us time to contact this group. I don't know if you would want them to do some kind of presentation, if you're good with just reading their website, you know, you tell me how you wanna proceed with this, but financially, it seems like a really smart move.
Now, how long do we have to have our money in there for?
There's no, there's no minimum time, I don't think.
It's gonna be true.
I know, the, the town has made a lot of interest on money that they have put there.
It's, yeah, this is being used by a lot of municipalities in the state, and it's only open to municipalities.
Sounds like a no brainer.
Yeah.
But if we've got that kind of money to put in there at four point something percent.
Yeah, plus it's just coming due, so the timing is pretty good.
Yeah, the timing is perfect.
Yeah.
I, I'd make a motion that we go ahead when that money is available to be moved, that we move it over to my class.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Good, you okay?
Yes.
Yes.
You told me I can wire it. I'm looking for a check.
Nice, nice.
Uh, okay, so we have a motion to, um, move that, that money, um, when that comes due to my class. Uh, do you want some more information from them, or do you, do you feel comfortable with it? Yes?
Yeah.
I would like more information.
All right.
Weekend, we haven't time to, you know.
We have time, right.
But this is the, yeah.
And that, so.
I mean, what's the thought? Are we thinking putting all?
That's my phone.
Roughly to.
Well, well, we have.
Or just a portion?
It's currently in a C D.
This is currently in a C D.
Currently basically nothing.
Correct, correct. Well, Greg's the one who, when Greg was here, so that's been quite some time. Um, we also have two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That is, that's like in another account at TD Bank. But that is to offset any fees, um, that we get charged from them, which has worked out pretty well. If we were to use it, then we'd have to, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Well, I say the one that's coming due in June.
July.
Or July.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, why don't we do that one, why don't we do that one first, after we get some more information and everyone feels comfortable with it? And then we can look at the other, the other ones, um, down the road.
Is there a second in that? Anyone second?
Yeah, that was seconded by.
I mean, nobody is paying that kind of interest.
No.
What's, which is, yeah. Which is just a cultural question. I mean, it just seems so high that, how do they offset that?
Um.
Janet, do you know how long the town has been with them?
I don't know. I don't know how long.
I can find that out.
Yeah. I'll, I'll call them and ask them if they can do a little presentation, or maybe we can do it via Zoom. We have a TV to put right here on this wall. We just don't have it up there yet. So we could have the Zoom call. Get our questions answered. All right, so we have a motion and a second, um. Well, I guess your motion was to put it in there.
Yes.
Okay.
When it came due.
Right, without any additional information, you're good to go right now?
I am, yes.
Okay, so your motion is to.
Move the money.
Transfer it in July, when the other, the C D is up for renewal.
Yes.
Okay, and that's been seconded. Okay, so, uh, let's do, let's do a roll call.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
No.
Mayor McFettrich.
I'm gonna say no also, even though it's carrying just because of getting extra information. Okay, so it did, so it did carry. Is the board still okay with me bringing this person in, even though we've, or at least doing a Zoom call, even though we've already voted to do it?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, because I think we may have some questions that we can get answers on. Okay, uh, the burn ban. Um, every year we, um, discuss lifting the moratorium on burning in the village. Um, so people can have small recreational campfires with very specific guidelines. Um, so that is on the agenda right now. Um, I think I gave you all a copy. I randomly chose some dates that were close to the ones that we had last year. So you might not like the dates that I chose. I chose May twentieth and ending on October fifteenth. Um, it was like a day or two off from what we did last year or the year before. Does anyone wanna propose different dates?
No, that just puts it one, a week past Columbus Day and a week before Memorial Day.
That's what I was thinking.
If the weather keeps going the way it's going right now, my fire pit's just calling to me right now.
I agree. All right, so is there a motion to lift the, um, to, to, let's see, to lift the ban on fires in order to allow recreational campfires in the Village of Champlain?
I make the motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any of the rules that you think need to be tightened?
We can put as many rules in here as we want.
Yeah.
It's the enforcement of them. Um, let's just hope that people use common sense with what they're doing and what they're putting in their fire pit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I mean, it's a great thing. We've had it a couple times when our grandkids have been there, boy, they thought that was just the best thing, so slay spread to do smores, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, let's, let's just hope people are responsible.
Yeah, absolutely. It's completely a safety factor here. We're a pretty dense village in terms of buildings being close together in some neighborhoods, so we need to be cautious and respectful. All right, anything else? Any other comments on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry.
You nodded. I thought that was.
I'm just thinking in my head.
Uh, anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, the intermunicipal agreement with code enforcement officer, that's already signed, um, the, um, the supervisor and I worked on this together and we signed it, but I did want you to be able to have a copy and to read it. Does anyone have any questions on any of it? This is just for this year. It's retroactive to January first. It goes through the year of twenty twenty-three. No? All right. So I, uh, wanna go on record thanking, uh, Tom Chombley for doing a good job in that and staying with it. Had not been updated in, um, several years. Hadn't been signed in several years. I have a couple of things to add here. Um, first of all, we need, um, an end of the fiscal year meeting to wrap up all our bills, so we need to set that.
Do you, do you wanna do this first, the resolution?
Well, I put, I put that next, so, yeah, I'm just gonna.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Um, I think we were looking at, what were you thinking, the twenty-fifth? Yeah.
It's.
At, at five? Does May twenty-fifth at five P M. work for everyone?
Yeah, there's no day, but we'll be here.
I know, I was just thinking, I think we're off that day.
Is it, is it on you, Snowy?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, what, three of them left?
Okay.
I'm gonna check my schedule.
Yeah, we had.
Yeah, that's right, we had one, yes, really.
Yeah, there is.
I can do that.
Can you do that? Okay.
At five, you said?
At five?
I'm looking at my, I had to turn my phone back. We should be good.
Okay, so the twenty-fifth at five P M. Okay. And we have one more resolution. This resolution authorizes the advertisement for bids array for the Village of Champlain Water Main Replacement Project. Whereas the Village of Champlain Village is the owner of the Village of Champlain Water Main Replacement Project, and whereas Barton and Lejudas D P C has been retained by the Village to prepare and design contract documents for the proposed project and to assist the Village with bidding the project in accordance with general municipal law. And whereas the Village Board wishes to complete the bidding process as expeditiously as possible and without unnecessary delay. Whereas the Village Board acknowledges the plans and specifications have been reviewed and approved by the Clinton County Department of Health. Whereas the Village Board acknowledges the plans and specifications are currently under review and have not yet been approved by the New York State Department of Transportation and the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of the Village of Champlain does hereby authorize the advertisement for bids for the Village of Champlain Water Main Replacement Project after receiving approval, approval from the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development and be it further resolved, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Um, may I have a motion to accept this resolution?
Smoke.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, and we have to do roll call because it's, yeah, we have to roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Um, Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McFettrich.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Um, old business. Personnel policy, we're going to get an update in the future.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, water plant training not needed at this point because it's running better.
Yes.
Okay. Um, twenty-nine Cedar Street, um, that I asked the code enforcement officer to send out the next letter of violation. So that's, the, the process is just being followed. And the only other thing is, I think, did I email you the dog law?
No.
Oh, I meant to, sorry. Um, the town has a dog law that's, uh, they're going to discuss tomorrow night. Um, it's more comprehensive than what we have right now. I think we should very seriously read through it and see if in the next few months, we don't want to, um, take on the same, the same dog, dog law. So I will send it to you. I must've gotten sidetracked.
Yeah, but do we follow the town because we, they actually do the village?
Well, not really, because we have our own code regarding dogs and it's not very tight.
It's not.
So I think we need, I think on our code, we also have to have, um, the law updated.
I think it makes sense for the poor dog control officer that he's dealing apples to apples when he's dealing with extremely.
Yeah, that's part of it too. I think he's probably going to see if the Village at Ross's Point will also adopt the same one.
I would imagine.
Mm-hmm. I'll send it out.
It just makes, it just makes more sense.
Yeah, I will send it out to everyone, um, probably on Wednesday. Okay, is anyone else have any old business to discuss?
On the birthday celebration, um, I have the music.
Yes.
So we're, we're set with that.
Yeah, this is coming together. It's gonna be really fun.
And they're, I think, reasonably priced for three hours.
Mm-hmm.
Five hundred dollars for three hours. We heard them play a business after hours. They were really, really good. So it's called All About the Bass, All Without the Bass, I'm sorry, All Without the Bass.
That'd be great. Thanks, Kim, for getting that. Anyone have anything else?
I have three out of four concerts booked with the food truck.
Yes, thanks, Nikki.
I need that date for the last one, so I can.
Yeah, and he hasn't given it to me.
But concerts, we don't have in the show.
Yeah, but. Well, we, we're having, well, we, we have three, and then there's a fourth one that wants to come in, plus the birthday one. So we might have five.
All right.
I know. Champlain's the place to play your music now.
Yeah.
Let's go, Village.
I can't believe Strawhaters wanna just, they said, they're talking.
I know, they really, they have to come back, yeah.
Yeah, and that was one of our biggest concerts.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, there's one I haven't heard from and another one, they have to get together to decide their date, but, well, we'll block four. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.